Wednesday, August 30th, 2023, Select Board Meeting. Present are members, all the members of the Board, Denise Luciano, Meg Arts, Alec Rich, Steve Hornsby, and myself, as well as the Town Manager, Mike Unitz. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Peter?
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, one God, and visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to start off tonight with the appointment of George Guttel as Highway Department Foreman. We have some of the folks from the Highway Department here.
How you doing? Hi, George Guttel, he's worked with us for 13 years. He's intimately familiar with all the workings at the Highway Garage. He's been recently, well, recently the Highway Lead Person, so he manages the crew in the field, and he could be a good fit for Foreman for the Highway Department.
Great.
Just one correction, 23 years.
Yeah.
Does anybody on the Board have any questions for George? Like, why do you want to be a Foreman? Anything like that?
Why now?
After 23 years, you know what you're into.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, it sounds like you're more than qualified, so I'll take a motion to approve the appointment of George Guttel as Highway Department Foreman.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, welcome.
Pretty welcome.
George, good luck in your new position.
Congrats.
Good luck to you. Thank you.
10 years of effort.
Watch the wire.
All right, so on to new business. We have a special presentation tonight. Alec, I put these in front of you, so not to put you on the spot, but I'd like to call up to the podium if I can. Robert Maderos. And thanks, Bob, and Alec has something, a couple of things he's going to read for him.
Okay. Want me to go out there or?
Yeah, you can go out there.
I'm going to go outside with Mr. Maderos.
You can make that.
At these tables, it's so far.
I know.
All right. So, this is Certificate of Appreciation. May it be known that this certificate is hereby presented to Robert Maderos in recognition of his 40 years of dedicated service to the people of the Town of Norton. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and hereby extend our deepest gratitude to you for your friendship and your contributions to the betterment of our community. Presented August 10th, 2023, by the Select Board of the Town of Norton.
Thank you.
We also have another one, from Commonwealth of Mass. Be it hereby known to all that Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Bob Maderos in recognition of your time in service in the Town of Norton. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Thank you.
I know you prepared a speech, so.
I wanted to stay longer, but they threw me out of town. I can't vote it, can't vote it, that's the way it is. But again, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you all. Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is a discussion and/or vote on extending the delivery host community agreement with Lucky Green Ladies. So before we begin this discussion, a couple of things I just wanted to say. I wanted to stress that part of the reason that we're having this meeting tonight, big part of the reason we're having this meeting tonight, is because the current HCA, which was signed two years ago, is expiring tomorrow. So we wanted to make sure that we have this meeting tonight so that we can discuss extending that contract, so that it does not expire tomorrow. So, but I do want to stress that any questions or comments must be limited to the topic as printed in the agenda and per Town Council and open meeting, and that's per Town Council and open meeting. All discussion at this meeting must be in regards to whether or not to extend the delivery HCA that expires on August 31st, 2023. This applies to the Board, the Town Manager, the Select Board designated, and representatives from Lucky Green Ladies. So the way I'd like to do this tonight is I'm going to have Mike and Renee come up and just talk to, give us an update on the negotiations, or an update on the status of the contract negotiations, but then also make a recommendation to the Board on whether or not we want to extend the HCA. And then after that, I'd like to invite Alyssa to come up and speak to the Board, she requested that. We currently do not have a public portion of the meeting set aside for the public to speak to the Board, but I feel like Alyssa made the request, and I think in partnership with Alyssa, I think it's only fair to have her come up and give her thoughts on the extension of the HCA as well. Okay? So, and then, of course, the Board will have a discussion as well. So.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
If you don't mind. When was this determined that we weren't going to be able to speak on the HCA, other than extending it?
So.
Because I've been for two weeks asking that we have a meeting to talk about it.
Yeah.
So, and I haven't heard anything back, so it's just jarring now hearing it in a meeting that we can't talk about.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that we can't talk about it, but just at this meeting, because we want to talk about the extension, that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So if we want to have a future meeting about the other HCAs that are currently, and get status updates on other HCAs, we can talk about that in the future.
So again, my question is, when was that determined? Because two weeks ago, I asked for a meeting to discuss the HCAs.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things, right?
We, somewhat, yes. But we can't discuss the HCAs, but I've been requesting a meeting for this for two weeks.
Yeah.
So when was it determined by Council? Because you're obviously reading something from Council. When was it determined?
First of all, I wrote this.
Okay. So when was it determined that we're not going to be able to discuss it? I just, I would like to know as a Board, and I'm sure the rest of the Board would like to know.
I don't think it was, I don't have a date and a topic for it. You know what I mean? Like, I can't say, like, oh, it was determined that we were going to, but what we talked about was having this meeting for the sole purpose of discussing the extension, and that's why we had to have it before first. So that's why we're talking about this particular issue tonight. And then if we want to have future discussions on the other HCAs, as far as updates and all that, we can do that at a future meeting.
Okay. So my email, well prior to this agenda coming out, asking for an update, got ignored by both Mike and yourself, so we're not going to get an update tonight?
Well, I don't know what you mean by an update.
No, we can just move forward.
Okay. All right. So the Chair is going to recognize Mike and Renee at this time to talk to us about extending the delivery HCA and with Lucky Green Ladies. So I'll turn it over to you.
Do you want to go first?
Go ahead.
So, one of the things that, you know, we were conscious of is the expiration date on this potential HCA, and our recommendation, Mike and I discussed this, is to, for the Board to consider extending the HCA for a six-month time period, because Alyssa has experienced significant delays. And we've talked about this verbally, but also in writing as well, she's experienced delays just getting the site prepared and doing the improvements that she needs to actually operate. So we didn't want the HCA to expire, and then the process of having to negotiate an HCA, submit that to the Cannabis Control Commission, to actually delay her delivery operations any further. So Mike and I spoke about this based on what she had indicated to us. We hope that the Board considers to extend that for six months, and I think the date is March 1st, 2024. Maybe I'd have to. It is.
Yeah, March 1st.
March 1st.
And I hope it won't take six months. I'm confident that we'll get something done sooner than that, but it could need room.
Yeah, we probably want to leave some room in case there's any kind of unforeseen circumstances. We don't want to have to be back here in two months extending it again.
Right.
Okay. Questions for Renee and for Mike?
Yes, so my understanding is we want to extend it so that it doesn't lapse. My understanding, again, through our documents here, is that on the 2nd of August, Alyssa had requested to extend it, or to have a meeting to extend it, and that didn't come to fruition in our last meeting. So why is it all of a sudden urgent now to extend it?
So I can't.
If it wasn't urgent before.
I can't speak to why it didn't appear on the agenda.
No, I can't.
Mike and I did talk about it. I think it was just a timing issue, but, you know, the expiration is tomorrow.
No, I understand.
Right, so we don't want to cause any further delay, so that's the time sensitivity.
And I'm looking at this, the initial email was on the 2nd of August, and we had a meeting on the 10th. So, Mike, can you explain why that wasn't on our meeting on the 10th? Not your fault.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Kevin, so Renee, she's, I believe, from what I've, what I've gathered, Alyssa would like to do a modification to the existing agreement, correct?
So I can't speak to that, because that's part of the negotiations. I can just speak to the extension of the HCA right now.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Nope. Okay, so I'd like to ask Alyssa to come up, if she would like to do so.
Hi. So I will just make this one comment, that my request for a meeting wasn't solely for the HCA that's going to expire. I wanted to discuss them all, but I respect the Chair's decision in, you know, not wanting to only discuss the HCA that's expiring, but I just wanted to make that clear. I'm also not opposed, you know, if the Board wanted to enter into an executive session so that we could continue to discuss those other HCAs, because they are important to me. But I'm not really in favor of the HCA being extended for six months, and that is because I will be open in six months, and once my business opens, that agreement is good for five years. The reason why it's expiring is because of the fact that I'm not open. I will be on the September CCC Agenda for final licensure, and, you know, after that, it's a pretty quick process, so about two months, maybe three. So with the six-month extension, although I appreciate it, you know, I'm not happy with my current agreement, and I want to request relief for the hardships, you know, as some of the things stated in the proposal, and Mr. Chair, please, you know, cut me, I don't, like Renee was kind of saying, both of the HCAs are very similar, so, you know, some stuff ties into the other, but I'm trying to strictly just speak to, you know, my current HCA, you know, that donation amount was given, you know, in a completely different landscape. You know, it was very competitive, I had a different retail location, it was three years ago, and I've tried, over the course of the negotiations for the delivery, to put limiting language in, and they have all been rejected. And I want to be fair, it's not that I've, you know, got the HCA and I'm running away from my commitment, it's not that at all, it's just that the industry as a whole have changed, and the circumstances surrounding my business have changed. And I'm very open to working with the Town and finding a middle ground, but I also wanted to make note that the Town is, because of the new law, the Town is now getting an additional 1% in sales tax revenue because of the new change in law, and that wasn't, you know, what the case was before. So I do think that, you know, although I, you know, I just feel uncomfortable committing to that such a big dollar amount, I think that, you know, the 1% definitely can make up for some of that.
Alyssa, when are you planning to open?
So I'm hoping two months, but if not two months, then three.
Okay. And I know you understand that we have to really shy away from discussing terms of the contract in open session in our meeting, right?
Sure.
So do you think that three months would be adequate for the extension of this HCA for your purposes?
Yes, but I will say that, I guess I should ask you if, for whatever reason, extenuating circumstance, if that's not able, you know, if something happens and three months isn't going to work, I'm sure that I could come back. I guess it's more of a question.
The contract states that the Select Board has the authority to, I'm not quoting it exactly, but that the Select Board has the authority to extend the contract. So I can't see why that would be, I can't say anything, I can't promise now for something for months from now, but I can say that, I can't see any reason why we would not, you know, if you were two weeks away, or something like that, or a month away, you know, you came back and forth and said, hey, I need another extension.
Sure, and I also just wanted to let the Board know, I guess, explain in a little bit more detail the reason that I've been delayed. I've been having a lot of issues with my landlord, and just him and his issues alone has delayed me five months. Additionally, right now, the issue that I'm facing is that I need to install a new underground wastewater holding tank. This is required by the Plumbing Inspector and the Board of Health. This system was supposed to be installed in 2003 per Mass DEP Code, but it never got done, and I'm the one that's stuck bearing that responsibility, you know, because I'm so close, it's, you know, I can't just walk away from it after, you know, because that comes up, so that's been delaying me as well. I'm not only having to get all the engineered drawings, you know, the Board of Health or the Health Agent wouldn't sign off on my temporary occupancy until I had approved engineered drawings from, by all parties, all departments, and the landlord. So that took three months right there. And, you know, just the, it's a big job, so the hiring process, and I'm sure as you guys have, you know, experienced in your personal lives, when you were bidding out the job, it takes time for people to get back to you. So those are kind of the delays that I've been experiencing, but, you know, I'm, every time I hit a delay, it makes me cry, because I am working so hard to open my doors. And, you know, I'm excited that I passed my post-provisional inspection, I was really proud of that, and, you know, I'm eagerly, eagerly trying to open as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Alyssa.
Can I have my attorney?
Sure.
Make a comment, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Nicholas Obolensky, on behalf of Lucky Green Ladies, I just, I want to say that I understand that the agenda item topic is the discussion of the expiration and/or extension of the existing contract, because I think it's impossible to discuss whether or not to extend the contract without discussing the contents of the contract, and what has transpired in the last few years, and why, I mean, she's identifying, Alyssa's identified the delays on her end, but there have been delays on the Town's end as well. And I think that part and parcel to the topic of whether or not to provide an extension to this contract is whether this Board could also, on the same agenda topic, choose not to extend this host community agreement, but to offer her the ability to enter into a new host community agreement. And you are the Board, you are the Select Board, you have the power to vote, to allow her to enter into negotiations for a new delivery host community agreement right now. That is, that is part of this agenda item, because this is whether or not to extend one HCA for delivery. And you could say, well, maybe we could let that, this one lapse, and let's vote on allowing her to create a new one that is in line with the current laws, statutes, and regulations that are in place, which have changed, as you've probably seen from the materials that have been sent to you. So I just, I just want to point out that that's not out of the realm of possibility for you, for this particular agenda topic, because the topic is, are you, is a discussion on the extension of the delivery HCA and/or vote. And that discussion can include what is within the document itself. Is it in compliance with the law? Is it in compliance with the new law? And if not, well, can we let that one expire, and then vote to let her create a new HCA that is in compliance? And you could do all that tonight. So I just wanted to let you know that that's a possibility.
Yeah, I disagree with that assessment. You cannot take on an agenda item that discusses an entirely new contract unless that is on the agenda. So maybe, I'm not going to, I don't want to get into a back and forth with you, but I disagree that that would fall under the scope of the agenda topic for tonight.
So, and Boardperson Hornsby was raising this issue somewhat. I mean, this meeting is in response to a request from Lucky Green Ladies to have a discussion, not just on the extension, but on all the HCA negotiations that have been occurring. And so it is unclear who and how the decision was made to limit the discussion tonight.
It was my decision as the Chair.
To specifically.
It was my decision as the Chair, and that's my job as the Chair to do that. So the Chair makes a decision on what, in concert and discussion with the Town Manager, the Chair decides what's going to be on the agenda for the meeting. So.
So you, hearing the request, you chose to only make it about extending the delivery HCA?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's, and that is within my right, that the Chair is the one to do it.
I didn't say it wasn't, I was just curious. I mean, and that is helpful, because I think that was the answer Mr. Hornsby was looking for earlier. I don't think he knew that, but, okay.
All right.
There you have it.
All right, thank you for your comments, we appreciate it.
If I may, just to provide some additional context too, and I don't think that you're aware of this, but part of the reason for the meeting as well is because we sent a recommendation. Mike and I discussed what that recommendation would be to extend the HCA. There, regardless of the conversations that have happened over the past year and a half, there's nothing in those conversations that delayed the opening of the operations. So our concern here was that we didn't delay it because of a line in the contract that said that it would expire in two years and have to go through the entire process again. Right? So I appreciate that Alyssa believes that she'll be open in the couple months, I do. Unfortunately, there have been unanticipated delays, so I would, you know, again, recommend that the Board consider the six-month. As soon as she commences operations, there's no expiration, right? The expiration dates of the term is only based on commencing operations. So just to allow her additional time, should there be some unforeseen delay that she runs into again, to do this.
Okay. All right, thanks, Renee. Mike, did you have any further comments? Okay. All right, so thank you to Alyssa, thank you to Nick, I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce your last name.
Obolensky.
Obolensky, I appreciate that, and to Renee and Mike. Does the Board have any further discussion or any comments?
Do you want to go first? Because I.
Okay, mention a quick one. I think we could extend the, both options, I think, are great options that you thought of, Nick, and I think at minimum, if we could, just a suggestion, we could approve the extension to become effective when she does open. So it can be floating, you know, she doesn't know exactly when. It can become effective when she opens.
All right.
And I do think with the tables that were provided, I think sooner than later would benefit us as well as her.
Yeah, I think, I think we want to extend it in a way that is fair to the Town, obviously, and fair to Lucky Green Ladies as well, so I think that's what our goal is with this extension. And, you know, ultimately, what we're trying to do with this extension is get to an agreement that everybody's, that everybody can live with. I don't know if it's happy with, or everybody can live with, and.
And that's the, we go for both parties.
Right, and that's what we want, right? And we want, we want, I can't speak for the whole Board, but I can speak for myself in saying, you know, we want Lucky Green Ladies in Norton. So if this extension is, gets us there, then to me, it's a no-brainer, right, that we should have approved the extension. Now we're just sort of talking about, like, the term and how long and all that.
And I do want to expand it, and I really do want to expand, but, you know, to respect your request, you know, I just want to make comments about the extension itself. And I think it's a big impetus to get it done. I understand the six months, but I think we can make it, yeah, I mean, it seems like she hasn't.
Go ahead.
Time to get it open.
Go ahead.
So certification, Richard, it needs to be effective tomorrow, so it doesn't lapse?
Yeah.
And then it goes until the new agreement goes into place, or the amendment or modification?
Yeah, I think, I think we probably have to have Council advise us on the language. Yeah, yeah. Because, because the contract right now expires two years after.
I mean, personally, I think it'd be better putting a date, whether it's six months or three months, if it's three months and you have to come back, you come back. But I think it's better if you have.
Yeah, and I understand Alyssa's concern about, you know, if it's six months, then, you know, she's, the contract term is five years, so, you know, if we can try to get it as close to her opening date, I think that's a fair request. Yep. So.
Just before I go, that's.
Nick, did you have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. All right.
So, to me, this whole thing is very strange. You know, having, the two of you know about this on August 2nd, and not have it in the update for our meeting on the 10th, to me is not acceptable. I mean, this is something that we should have known about. Whether it's expiring or not, whether there's issues or not, there clearly were issues that you both were aware of, that this whole Board didn't know about. So that to me, and this is regarding the extension, that to me is unacceptable. I mean, that stuff we should have known on the 10th. Like Alec, I'm not going to get into the other HCAs, because I have a lot to say about it. I requested a meeting about this two weeks ago, got ghosted by both of you. So, you know, I will make a motion to extend the HCA for 60 days, depending on the fact that the new HCA is agreed upon within 60 days. So that's my motion.
Second. Okay, I'd like to have further discussion on that. So I think I would be careful about any language like that, not knowing whether or not we can have that language in the contract, that it says that it's within a certain amount of days, provided that business opens within a certain amount of days. What are your thoughts on that, Mike?
What is the logic for that?
The logic is, I would like the HCA to be, I mean, it's been, it started in January, it's now the end of August, it's been eight months. Another two months should complete the HCA negotiations, if not, it should come back to the Board. So that's my logic behind it, yeah. And especially the fact that we're not being updated properly on it. So that is a huge concern to me. So there's a motion and a second.
Yeah.
So the discussion is among the Board.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I'm, again, I'm a little, I want to be cautious about any kind of language like that, without knowing if that language is acceptable, legally acceptable. It very well could be.
Well, I also asked for Town Council to be here tonight, and they're not, so.
So if we want to do, if we want to do an extension, we can vote on that extension, I would, I would suggest that we do a 90-day extension without the additional language. Right, just a simple.
My motion is, I'm not going to.
No, that's fine, you don't have to.
Just a simple time period extension, Tom, you know, no other extras, like contingencies or.
I think I would be concerned about that not being valid, and, you know, I think Alyssa has asked for, you know, has stated that 90 days would work for her, you know, three months. So I don't think there's any, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and I just would be concerned that that's not proper to do it that way. And like I said, there's a 95% chance that it is, you know, but I would just be concerned.
If we could discuss the other motions, or the other HCAs, I would have different motions on a completely different topic, but this is, I think this has gone too far, it's way off the rails at this point. The fact that none of us even knew about this until the business owner had to reach out to all of us, and include the state representatives, and all the members of the CCC, to the point where she wasn't getting relief from the Town, she wasn't, she didn't hear. She wasn't, she didn't hear back from the town for two months. So that, to me, is a giant red flag. And the fact that you two knew about it and didn't tell us is another giant red flag. So that is my motion, and I'm not going to amend it.
Okay. I'm not asking you to. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Steve, would you just repeat the, the motion?
Oh, you gotta make your own thing. To extend the HCA for 60 days with stipulation that the new HCA is negotiated and completed by then.
Okay.
If not, the negotiations come back to the, the board, the select board.
Okay. All right.
When, when, when they normally, I'm sorry, I'm just.
Well, it did, my, I didn't, through the chair. My, my thought process is, obviously, it's been eight months and nothing has really happened on this. If there's another 60 days and nothing happens, then it should come back to us to negotiate it directly.
I think the expiration of the contract would require that.
Yeah.
Right, right. But, but I guess I'm just asking, the motion contingent upon a renegotiation or just lapse, right? So if it just laps and it goes back.
Depending on the renegotiation. Negotiation happening if that she wants.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to expect, it needs to be, it needs to be done. It's supposedly at, at the finish line, and they're dealing with a few things. So I don't think that's absurd to ask for another 60 days to have it done.
All right. So we'll have a vote on Steve's motion.
Okay.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, or nay?
Nay.
I don't want to say nay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to extend the host community agreement, the delivery host community agreement with Lucky Green Ladies for 90 days.
I second, sorry.
All right, having a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay. 90 days it is? All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
If the board would like a detailed timeline of how the negotiation process has been and.
This isn't part of the extension, so we can discuss it.
I'm just saying, if you'd like an update.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, point of order. This is not part of the discussion, this is not part of what you.
The chair is recognized. The chair is recognized, Ms. Obolensky. Go ahead.
If the board would like an update of the timeline for the negotiation process back and forth, then, and, you know, I can't give details, but at least the timeline, I'm happy to provide that at the next meeting.
Okay. And can the, people in the audience, please? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can I repeat that?
I was just saying, if the board would like a timeline of the negotiation process, not the details, but at least the timeline, when we did respond and provided updated review documentation, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you, I would like a timeline and, and details on the negotiations. Thank you.
We'd have to talk to council, council on that.
Well, we are the governing authority that approves it, so there's no reason you can't give that to us. There's absolutely no reason.
Yeah. Let's, I think we can talk about that with town council and.
Can we be included in that discussion with town council?
You can be involved in any discussion you want.
I asked to be in, all right.
There just can't be a quorum of the board.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
I also have created a timeline, if that may be helpful for some of the board members to see my time at timeline as well. And you could let me know after you speak with council whether to include the details or not. But I also have a timeline that I would be willing to provide.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. I think next on the agenda is town meeting articles?
Yeah. I know Bob Kimble is here. We just wanted to see if the board would put their name to two articles on the warrant, because the warrant closes tomorrow. One would be to tie the historical society building, which is town property, into sewer, and also to pave the driveway there. And I know we're, we're working on getting thoughts for it, which obviously we'll need before town meeting. But we'd like to see if the board would be willing to have that, those two articles be from the select court.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The, the, the property is actually owned by the town, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's. Thank you.
All right.
As you can see, the parking lot's in very good shape. We, I'm concerned about the amount of, all the people going to the parking lot and, and obviously talking there. We had puddles, we get all kinds of issues going on. I have been reaching out and trying to get some estimates. I know I need to have at least three. And I've already started the process. It looks like a small expansion because a parking lot isn't sufficient the way it is today. When you park in there, you can get about eight cars in there, but no one can park behind you. They're parking on the grass. You know, it's, it's becoming a nuisance. So we're trying to expand it about 25 feet.
I only parked on the grass because Mike parked on the grass.
I have always talked to you. But I think, in all reality, instead, we have to add about 25 feet to it. It's not just on one side, it's like a, a back and forth. We have to keep in mind the property lines and all that other stuff, but.
I didn't mean to park on the grass, I'm just trying to.
Everybody has to park in the grass, there's no place to park, so. I'm getting some rough estimates, I'm getting around 19,000 so far. I'm waiting for two more. So that's, that's the one issue we're trying to address, is that, that one problem. The rest of the driveway is in pretty good shape. If you're going in, going into the egress is fine. The circle around the front of the building is fine. It's just that one section has never been touched. And I believe the problem is, it's made of concrete and rebar. And unfortunately, that all has to come out before they put the new pavement down. So. So we have to, we have to move that. On the other subject, it's town sewerage. We have a cesspool. We don't have, no idea, we just recently found it. We've never had it on. We have no idea how old it is. We don't know if it's, you may not know this, but the original high school in Norton was on that property. And that building, as they always know, there in 1965. We're guessing that the rural people of Norton back in 65 probably connected to the existing cesspool and not, didn't put it in the system. So when I have, we have large events, and we've had a few. And most recently was the president from Bristol County came up and helped us paint the buildings and get it back in shape. And the system wasn't working. So we're concerned about that. We had a couple of other issues we're dealing with. The, the contractor will put the, the road improvements on the sewerage itself, the municipal sewerage, went down 78 inches. Unfortunately, he didn't take a look at the back of our building because we had to have to pump it up because it's just not going to work on a flow. It just doesn't work. But I just, I did get one price so far, and I'm surprised to find out that the price for the pump and the gravity feed are almost the same price because the type of holes that they have to use is much smaller. It's about an inch and a half compared to six inches. So I'm getting an education on how it all works. But I think we're kind of waiting toward probably just going with the pump because the other problem we have there is wedge. We all heard it, I'm sure, when they were putting in the, in the sewer line. They were drilling and drilling and drilling. They couldn't last, obviously, they were drilling all the time. And the funny thing is, I've reached out to 11 different contractors, most of Norton, asking them for help. And one called me back and said, there's no way on earth I'm going to touch Main Street. And his reason for it is, and by the way, I've had the same conversation with a guy who did give me a price, is when the developer on the road had to jizzle his way down and do the spur to the edge of the property line, that's where he ended. Well, guess what? He ended it right up against the granite. So we've got another issue going on there. Any contractor doing any work on Main Street's going to have to continue to chisel in some areas because we've had two properties done, one across from the historical society and one to our left, Wendell's. The garage out back and one home. And both properties had the spur end up against the granite.
So they're not currently on town sewer? Those, those.
They are. They have to drill, they have to drill and drill with drill. But they got, they got it in there.
Yeah.
Just, just an FYI for future development because you, you think about, we have schools up here, we're going to have to connect at some point. And I don't know if the granite went that far, the wedge went that far. But I know that the traffic light end of West, West Main has got a lot of lights. So, anyway, we're asking that the board consider putting both articles on the, on the warrant. The land is owned by the town. We do own the building, we're responsible for it. And in the last few months, right after the pandemic, because it was unoccupied for two years, we spent tens of thousands of dollars to restore it. And we're still spending money on it. So any help that the town can give us to get this, these projects done, we appreciate it. And we're not looking for a lot of money. I'm guessing the sewer line is going to be less than 25 and the traffic, the expanded driveway probably less than 20 for total. So we, we thank you for that consideration.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Bob. Anything, any questions, Rob, or comments?
Do, do we have draft warrant articles that you want us to look, that you're looking for us to put our name to?
Well, we can, I mean, town manager can create his own draft.
Yeah, I'll get those fired.
So what are the two? We're asking for money for the paving and then money for the pump?
Money for municipal sewer.
To connect to some.
Municipal. Connect to municipal sewerage.
They have to be two separate, yeah.
Yeah, they have to be separate. So the paving would be, you know, a motion to, a lot of the town to go into an agreement to pave the, say, the parking lot area. And then the other would be a motion to, to connect to municipal sewerage.
Yeah, it sounded like you didn't want to go to the sewage route. You wanted to do the pump route instead, but, so I was a little confused.
Well, it's one of the same. What they do, when we did one of kind of years ago, because of the, the water elevation and because of the area, they have to put in what they call a pump, it's a grinder pump.
Yeah.
It stands about this tall. It goes into the ground. The water goes into it on gravity. It grinds it up and it pumps it to the street.
Yeah.
So that's the option we're looking at, will probably work for us because of the granite. The other option is, you come outside the building, the pipe is right, you run it to the street and gravity can carry it. That's not the worst one we have. So unfortunately, we're going to have to probably go with the grinder, with the system. So we're just, we're trying to connect to municipal sewerage.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the pump is for when the sewer's coming out of the building here, and the sewer is up here. So it has to kind of go up. That's what the pump, yeah.
And it allows you to use a smaller pipe into the sewer?
Yeah, because it grinds it up. It just takes everything and it's like a big, like a grinder, grind itself a drink or something. Just put it in the grinder, it just grinds it and you got it. Makes it like gravy and it shifts it. And because of that, you also have some flexibility on the hose because if you do the gravity, it has to be straight. And, who's Bob, the air, so he could explain to you.